Okay, good evening.[1.79][1.79](laughter)
I don't know what else we can do.[5.31][5.31](laughter)
Welcome, uh, welcome to the Falls Township Board of Supervisors meeting for February 20th, 2018. We'll begin the meeting with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mrs. Pollan?
Mr. Galloway?
Here.
Mr. Bransky?
Here.
Mr. Parton?
Here.
Mr. Drucker?
Here.
Okay. Um, we're operating, flying a little bit without our navigator this evening. Mr. Gray had to leave to go home. He was a little, well, not a little, under the weather. He was very under the weather. Um, so we'll try to manage without him. We think Mr. Clark has the ability to do some of this work. We're not totally sure of that, but we'll find out. Um, we're gonna be able to begin tonight with a couple of presentations, which we're, you know, proud to have here. First by our Chief of Police, Bill Wilcox, for recognition of years of service for some of our police officers. Chief?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we want to thank you tonight for allowing us to do this. On behalf of myself and the entire police department, we wish to thank you and to thank the following officers for their dedication and service. Unfortunately, some of the officers couldn't be here this evening, so we're gonna play this by ear. Let's start with Detective John Vella, 20 years, hired February 4th, 2008.[100.32][100.32](applause) Thanks, John. Officer David Gold, date of hire, February 4th, 2008.[118.03][118.03](applause) Unfortunately, I don't see Officer Crutz. Detective Kathy Kaufman couldn't make it this evening. She had told us beforehand Sergeant Clark isn't here. And we see Officer Jonathan Caesar.[144.16][144.16](applause)
Yeah. How long has Officer Caesar been here?
Thirty years.[154.66][154.66](laughter)
I didn't think he was, I didn't think he was a 2008 hire. No, alright. Thirty years. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Paul Allison, Peter.[165.62][165.62](applause)
Thank you. Alright, we also have a presentation tonight by our Park and Rec Director, Mr. Andrews, who has some photo contest winners for us.
Evening, everyone. Back here for more awards.
Right.
For the 2017 Fall Photo Contest, this is our third, third year doing it. The entries this year were unbelievable. I don't know if anybody saw the pictures on Facebook. They were tremendous. So, we're gonna announce the winners tonight, ask them to come up, get a certificate, and a gift card. So, without further ado, first award is for the wildlife category, Pamela Kennedy.[212.81][212.81](applause) The winner in the architecture photo winner, the architecture photo winner is Kathleen The winner in the flora/plants photo category is Arlene Flanagan.[251.34][251.34](applause) Okay, the winner in the landscape category is Fred Backhouse.[268.27][268.27](applause) And our last category is in the miscellaneous other category, I don't know if she's here, Kelly Erwin. I'll make sure Kelly gets that. Okay, wanna get a photo out with the board?
Sure. You want us down there? You want us to stand here?
Yeah, standing there, that's fine.
Stand here? Okay.
That's fine.
And I'm here with Rachel Hall from the Park and Rec Board. She spearheads the photo contests.
Thank you, Rachel.
Take a picture of a bird?
Although we should probably have them taking the picture.[310.02][310.02](laughter)
Thank you very much. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Andrews, are we gonna be able to hang some of these photographs in the building?
Yes. Yes, we are. We're gonna get them developed, and they're gonna go in the main hallway by the tax office. We have the other years up there currently.
Awesome. Great. Thank you.
Well.
Okay. Um, alright, it moves to item number one, which is public comment. We have one name on the list, Guido Marianni.
(laughing) We knew you wouldn't miss this meeting.
Are you kidding? Uh, I recently read an excellent guest opinion, and it was written by David J. Hantash, that explains how drug abuse leads to addiction, causing harm not only to the abuser, but also directly to families, and the immense damage that it does to society. Now, he points out that at least five people are adversely affected for every addict. In 2015, there were 20 and a half million Americans 12 years or older with a substance abuse disorder. That's 102.5 billion other people that were affected. That's about a third of the population of the United States. We have a problem. We do. Now, enter legalization of medical marijuana, which is here this month, which we believe is quickly followed by legalization for recreational use. Be careful of that. Mr. Hantash, I believe, is correct that the ultimate goal is the legalization of all drugs, and that is by design. And he points the finger at the marijuana lobby, and I agree. But medical marijuana is here, and the townships can't use local zoning laws to keep it out. But the townships can make sure that the zoning codes direct marijuana growing and processing operations and dispensaries to the location that makes the most sense in the township. Now, I've had some training. I've had both some training and experience dealing with addiction. I'm telling this board, don't be deceived by the increasing focus on treatment. I agree with Mr. Hantash that in order for treatment to succeed, there must be an enforcement plan in place. Get ready for that. We should have, we should have an enforcement plan in place. Properly controlled medical marijuana may have its very limited use and place, but when the rest of that plan comes, and I'm telling you it's coming, this board, this township, you say no to recreational use. Any drug. Say no to the legalization of any drugs. Get a plan, get it in place. I'm telling you, it's coming. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's the only name on the list. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak?
(phone ringing)
Okay. See no hands. Alright, let's move to item number two on our agenda, which is MLH at 150 Roebling, or 150 Roebling LLC. This is an amended final plan. As, oh, thank you. As a land development, maybe we'll, go ahead, Mr. Sullivan. Can you explain a little bit about what's going on here?
Thank you. I can certainly try.
Thank you.
This is an amended final plan application for MLH 150 Roebling LLC. As for a medical marijuana facility in the KIPC. Applicant's project, proposed project consists of the construction of facilities for the growing and processing of medical marijuana, along with associated stormwater management facilities and parking facilities. Representing the applicant tonight is Ms. Carrie Nace and Mr. Robert Showalter.
Hi, good evening. My name's Carrie Nace. I'm an attorney with Fox Rothschild here on behalf of the applicant, MLH Explorations, Bob Showalter, who is the engineer on the project, and Mr. James Connolly, on behalf of the applicant. As you're aware, the applicant is proposing a clinical research medical marijuana grow processing facility on the property. Recall, last year, the applicant did receive special exception approval for this use on this particular property, and we were previously before you with a preliminary final land development plan, which proposed to demolish the existing buildings on the site and rebuild a new facility. We did receive approval of those plans. Subsequent to that, though, we did take a look at what was being proposed, and it was determined that it was more efficient and cost-effective if we would utilize the existing buildings. So the applicant is now proposing to keep the existing buildings in place. However, for security purposes, they are proposing a small 3,000 square foot addition, which would connect the three buildings. The existing stormwater facilities in place are sized to handle this addition, especially since most of the addition is primarily being constructed on existing impervious. So, the applicant is requesting seven waivers. We did submit, along with the plans, a waiver letter, which was in your packet. We're happy to go through those waivers if you'd like. We also did receive a review letter from the fire marshal, as well as the township engineer. All of the items in those letters are, will comply, and again, if you'd like, we're happy to go through each of those items and answer any questions if you'd like.
Okay. Alright, just 'cause I, you know, some people have asked questions about this, and so I just wanna go through the little bit of the history. That originally, a few years ago, there was an application to really build sort of two identical sort of buildings, um, you know, to do growing processing. One would be sort of independent, and one would be partnering with a medical research facility. And that was looked at and approved, and I guess when the, when the permits came through, um, the commercial, um, project didn't get approval, but obviously this one did. And so now this is sort of looking at the partnering up, I guess, with, with the medical research, as you said.
And just to clarify one point, just so you are aware, the clinical research medical marijuana grow process facilities, they have not yet accepted applications.
Okay.
So it has not yet been granted a license. We're anticipating that it would.
Right.
But I did just wanna correct that.
Oh, no, thank you. Thank you.
So, so that's to come, hopefully.
Okay. Okay. Comments or questions for Ms. Nace?
No.
No, not.
Okay. Um, and Mr. Sullivan, anything from you?
Uh, no, thank you.
Okay. Uh, the question was brought up by the previous speaker about placing facilities like this in appropriate spots in the township, and we, you know, I think everybody thinks that's looked at this plan, this is an appropriate spot, especially for the security reasons. If you don't mind, just quickly, can you summarize that some of the security protocols are in place to, you know, obviously this is a facility that'll be growing marijuana, so how is it kept safe, and how does that, how does that work?
Sure. If you don't mind, I'll turn that over to Mr. Connolly, and he can go through what is being proposed as far as security.
Sure. I'm not asking to give away the codes to the, codes of the vault or something like that, but just a general idea of...
Yeah, no problem. Yeah, so as you said, the site itself has its own, you need a passcode to get into the site, you know, the US Steel site. We will have, our property itself will be fenced in. You'll need, you know, a ID to get into the facility. There'll be cameras, you know, based upon, a lot of this is based upon what the Department of Health of Pennsylvania's requiring. There'll be motion sensors, cameras. The, the, the security on this facility will be dramatically greater than probably any other industrial site within that facility. Within the facility, there'll be cameras in all the growing rooms, all the storage areas. There'll be, you know, two or three factor identification required to get into areas that actually have plant material, or have flower, or have finished product here. So there'll be substantial, probably several hundred thousand dollars of investment in security equipment and apparatus for that facility.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Um, there's no comments or questions. Uh, this would be Resolution 18.
Oh, five.
Oh, five. Thank you, Mrs. Pollan. Um, any public comment? See no hands. Is there a resolution to approve, or excuse me, is there a motion to approve Resolution 1805, amended final plan for MLH 150 Roebling LLC?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.[922.73][922.73](applause) Okay, next item on our agenda is Morton Salt. This is a waiver of land development. Mr. Sullivan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a waiver of land development application for Morton Salt Incorporated. They also are located in the KIPC. Applicant's proposed improvements consist of construction of a permanent roof and an existing frame for a 600 square foot canopy. This project barely meets the requirements for land development, which is why it's a waiver.
Thank you.
Representing the applicant, of course, is
Welcome back.
Thomas Hecker, Esquire.
And I'll say publicly, before Mr. Hecker begins, um, you know, had some, some personal issues, and we were all thinking about you. Just glad to have you back.
Thank you. I appreciate it. So, I figured this was a good application to get the rust off.[992.69][992.69](laughter) It's been a while, so, this one's a relatively simple application. With me is Quentin Howard, who is the plant engineer for Morton Salt. I think the picture describes exactly what it is we're proposing to do, better than anything that I could say. The existing frame structure has covering of about, a little under 500 square feet. And what we're really seeking to do is recover the entire frame structure, which is about total 1,100 square feet, roughly, a little under 1,200 square feet. And that's really what this is all about. And as you can gather, um, you know, trucks getting products in the open elements, not a good thing. So that's why the smaller portion was put up immediately, because we could get a building permit for that. But this required a waiver of land development. So it's, uh, basically, uh, a more efficient, better operation, keep the product out of the elements while the trucks are loading. That's really all there is to it. Uh, we did receive a draft of the resolution that was submitted, and there was one waiver issue as typical. The ordinance requires planting of street trees where suitable. Given the location of this building, and the property surrounding it, we've asked for a waiver not to have to do that. Trees don't get along real well with big trucks and heavy traffic, so, other than that, the items in the resolution are, will comply.
Okay. Alright.
Did you see the copy of the fire marshal's letter?
Uh, yes. Yeah. We've calculated, well, two things. We're gonna give them the truck turning temples, not a problem. Secondly, we had a calculation done with regard to the height of the canopy, so there's no issue with the height of it. At the lowest point, it's 21 feet, four inches, four and a half inches, so there's plenty of, plenty of space.
Okay. Any comments or questions for Mr. Hecker?
No, it's pretty good.
No, but I'm kinda curious why this would require land development.
Anything over 500 square feet in addition would require land development.
Oh, you just missed.
So that's why we did it in two stages.
Okay. Oh, got it. You did the first five without...
We had the building permit for that little one that's under 500 square feet, with the cooperation of Mr. Bennett and Mr. Sullivan. And so we decided we'd come in and get the waiver of land development for the rest of it.
Okay. Yep, that's all I had.
Straightforward.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, any public comment needed? This is Resolution 1806, granting waiver of land development to Morton Salt 12 Roebling Road. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, gentlemen. Good to see you again.
Just in time for 75-degree weather. Put this roof up, yeah. Okay. Item four is consider proposal for geese management services at Falls Township Community Park. Mr. Andrews is here, and Mr. Clark is also prepared for this presentation as well.
I'm ready.
Mr. Andrews?
Okay, here we are again. This is our annual meeting. Just to give a little background on this program, this, we've been doing this at more aggressive geese harassment hazing program for three years now. This would be the fourth year if approved. It's really reduced the geese population down at the community park greatly. I think right now we are, you know, going into that fourth year. We're more at a maintenance phase right now. I think we've really done a great job. Rick's company's done a great job at really reducing the geese population down there at the park, making the park cleaner and so forth. But, as you know, I think we talked about in the past, this is something we have to continue and be on top of. If we let it go, um, the problems will come back again. So I do wanna let you know, from the year 16 to the year 17, our costs have dropped 20 percent with the harassment program. So, it is trending in the right direction, and I continue to, you know, feel that's gonna happen. So, Rick Shadle from SNS is here with any questions you may have on the program, and, you know, or of me, I'm here too.
Okay. Alright. Well, I think obviously we're familiar, pretty familiar with the, with all the operations and the, and the, um, Mr. Shadle, so, any comments or questions? Any specifics or thoughts the board members have? Mr. Galloway?
Uh, no, thank you.
Bransky?
Brian, do you, do you know what was left on the table from what we approved last year?
Uh, we were approved, I believe, it was up to, it was 27, so we ended up at 18.5 last year. So, you know, we really, like I said, we had extreme savings. The first year, if you looked at the numbers, the first year in 15, we didn't start till late, because the program, we had to get it approved and everything. So, you know, it's really trending in the right direction. So, this, that, his cost on here is the max it would be. But we're, we're coming in under that normally each year substantially.
Alright.
It's trending the right way, but it's something we have to keep on. It's a priority thing. If we prioritize it, I think the program will continue to do well, the park will be clean, I think the patrons will be happy. If we let it go, like I know years ago, he did a roundup, let it go, they came back stronger, so...
Last year was, you know, at this time, I was outspoken about the money we were spending on geese management.
Absolutely.
So, it's nice to see that we were, we were down, we're down to like, what would we say, 18-ish this year?
Yeah, mm-hmm. Absolutely. And we're doing the program with the border colleagues in conjunction. That helps, too. That's through the Geese Chasers, which we'll be talking about a little bit later. That's a 10-week program. So, Mr. Shadle and Mr. Savoy from Geese Chasers, they coordinate a time where he's doing his harassment with the dogs, and then they might coordinate with something they're doing. So, it, they really work well in tandem. So that's a big part of it, too. And, you know, I, I, I think it's something I recommend continuing with, because...
No, yeah, absolutely. But, you know, like last year, we were at, with the two combined, we were in the, you know, low 30s range.
Right, right. It's going, it's going in the right way. It's going in the right direction.
Alright, thanks.
Yep.
Mr. Dent?
No.
Mr. Rocco?
No, I'm, well, just one, and that's the, I'm always curious about the take, the limited take. And I think your normal response is, we gotta go through this process, and then...
Well, we, we have applied for it again. Brian has applied for it again. We've had it, uh, last year, we had, we had the permit, we didn't utilize it. We didn't feel we needed to at that point, so, but we are securing it again.
So what made, what, what was the, the logic in that decision? Can you help me understand?
Of not using it, or...
Yeah, yeah.
Um, there's a, there's a lot that goes into, to using it. Um, there's a lot of folks that have to be notified, a lot of things that have to happen, and we just didn't feel it was necessary based on the movement we were getting from the geese. Prior year, we had a lot of nighttime activity. Some of the cost savings going into 2017, we had less night work to do. On our short-term visits, we weren't having birds that were there early in the morning, we didn't have them there late at night. So, that helps with cost savings. Those birds that just kinda dig in and wanna stay, they're the ones that really need to go. And, uh, we have this permit, we need to use it. Certainly, we'll be going through the channels to use it. We just didn't feel it was necessary.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
No.
Okay. Um, Mr. Andrews did mention geese chasers, and I actually was gonna bring that up right after this.
Yeah, let me get that.
Just sort of one after the other. Um, so, any, is there any public comment needed? Okay, I knew that was coming. Uh, one hand, is there a motion to open public comment?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Marianni? It's our normal discussion.
Annual.
This is annual, sorry, yeah, right, it's annual. This is the advertisement for Flightline.[1497.51][1497.51](laughter)
It's in.
I know, I know it is.
Uh, look, it's time again to consider a proposal for geese management, which is what this board does. They've always opted to have a program that manage geese, rather than get rid of geese, as I've consistently recommended. Listen to me. Geese in high concentrations are likely to get disease and parasites. They do. Geese droppings harbor parasites that cause human health problems. That's why you wanna get rid of them. The, eat plants needed for ground cover, erosion control, and geese cost taxpayers money, as they have year after year after year, because we coddle them and try to manage them rather than get rid of them.
Well, I wouldn't go so far as to say we coddle them.
Yeah.
Well, you, didn't you try to pet one, and it bit you?
More than once.
More than once, see? That's why you have to get rid of them.
They harassed my dog as well.
Now, I've consistently recommended that the most effective method to eliminate geese is to treat the area with products that are unpalatable to them, or disruptive to them, but they're still safe for humans and wildlife. Uh, we agreed to do this twice before, and both times, we never did it. We never followed up, and I don't know why. But tonight, in addition to the things that, that you've taken a look at, I want to add to the list of deter, deterrence. A solar-powered light that's scarcely noticeable to humans, very disruptive to the geese, causing them to find another habitat after a few restless lights, because you can't sleep. Product is maintenance-free, it's not troubling to people, it's environmentally friendly, it's humane for geese, and it's cost-effective and sustainable. Now, that solar-powered lights that change each day and flash about 360 degrees every two seconds from dusk to dawn at the eye level with the geese. They require no maintenance, and each unit will get rid of geese in a 75-yard radius. Okay? I'm gonna give you a copy of this, and then you'll remember it, and you can remind me where it was next year.
It's, I'm curious, like, I guess you have to move it periodically, because otherwise...
No, no. Listen, listen.
Okay, alright.
The products are maintenance-free, the lights are solar-powered, and the photocell automatically activates at dusk, and it deactivates at sun, at sunrise. And the units require no upkeep. To humans, you hardly see it. They're environmentally friendly, and they have no impact on the natural landscape. Though they annoy the geese, to look, it leads them to relocate, go somewhere else, they have no effect on them. Now, once properly installed, I think we can get rid of our problem, and I'm gonna give you each a copy of this, and you, hang on to it for next year, you can bring it up again. But my friend will be here, I'm sure, since I will. Just please stay. You got it. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah, sure.
Um, like, we see a little bit of the geese problem at my Little Lake, but never at night. I've never seen a geese land on our field at night, ever. So I was just kinda curious how this would help, and, and do we have the geese problem at night at our park now?
I think you got a geese problem, not only here, but all around us, really. If it, if you looked at, uh, where the chairman works, you have geese there, I mean, uh...
Oh, across the street.
I tried to walk across the lawn there one night, and I turned the atmosphere blue by the time I got to the door. It's really, really bad. You can go anywhere you wanna go, you can go down any of these streets, and you go there, Truman High School, uh, there's, there's no room to even stand up there. This applies to us because it's our park, and that's what I'm concerned with. But it, it, things like this...
I just never seen them at night. I, I, you know, I'd never seen, like, at our fields, I've never seen a geese land at nighttime at all. I didn't know why, or...
Sleeping. The lights on? Are the, are the big lights?
Yeah, that's what I was wondering, because they have nightlights at night.
You get a hold of something like this, you won't see them in the morning or afternoon neither, because they'll be gone.
Okay.
Take a look at it, think about it.
Alright, thank you.
Buy a couple of tractors.[1796.33][1796.33](phone ringing)
Okay. Okay. All right. Any other comments or questions? Is there a motion to close public comment?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I wish to hear Mr. Shadle's thoughts on the lights, or does it matter?
Yeah, I'm, I'm curious.
Mr. Shadle, are you familiar with these lights and how they work, or...
Yes, I am. A couple, a couple things. The reason you don't see geese on turf grass at night is because safety's on the water. So they're going to be on bodies of water. It's just instinctual response. So when we deal with them at, you know, the big lake, typically, we're finding them on the water. So that's where we're running them off at night, there. And a comment made by the gentleman, the goose problem's all around us. So just to kind of touch on that real quick, it just kind of shows you the big picture. It's, it's all around us. So we're not the only people pressuring geese, and we've got a company that uses dogs that helps us. They're chasing geese all over the place, along with six other goose companies and whatever. So there's pressure on these geese on all avenues. So they, they tend to put up with more than geese that perhaps are not imprinted to the site. So my experience with lights for geese and with just about every bird is they have very little efficacy, okay? We've tried many of these tools, different times, different places. A lot of it has to do with pressure. Geese are getting a lot of pressure, your site, another site, they go somewhere else, they're getting pushed around. It's not like they're going to fly to North Carolina. They still stick around, so you got to keep constant pressure on them. And things such as lights, and effigies, and those kinds of things, they just, it's a scarecrow that they grow used to. So we have just found that the best thing to move geese is two-legged upright things, called people, okay? That's the best thing. An aggressive stance against geese with different methods used by manpower is what we've found to give us the best results, so.
Where do they nest at? In the bushes and stuff, right, in the trees?
Typically, not in bushes, usually more in an open area. More pressure on them, they will start to push into some tight areas, so...
What I mean is on the ground, they're not up in the trees.
Correct, they are ground nesters. Yeah. So we have them nest there in the fragmites that's in the, the one wetland, or both wetlands now are full of fragmites. It's, it's pretty tough stuff to get in there. But that's where we find most of the nests now. So all the open areas, they, they don't nest there, so.
There's some, there's some residents in the neighborhood I live in, and there's a pond behind the houses that they have a lot of problems with the geese.
Right.
Would a product like this work? Are you familiar with that area? Would a product like this work?
Is this the Nottingham?
Yes.
It, it may very well. That's a small, compact area. I mean, there's a couple other tools that would work there, I talked to Mr. Gray about. Even some involvement from some of the homeowners there could easily rectify or bring that problem down.
Right.
Yeah, big dog.
You're always a big dog. You're, you're always going to have challenges at any of these sites. This site that we're working on here, though we've been able to bring the cost down, and some of that is just repeat, 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 you start to bring down the number of geese that are imprinted to the site. You're never going to get to zero unless the population in the northeast just collapses. You'll never get to zero.
But this is a product that requires no maintenance, and maybe it's something we could do ourselves, and it'd be a nice area to test something like this on.
It would be worth testing, you know, on a small area. On this big area, we've just not found good fortune. Same with flight control product. It's a great product, but we find that it's used in very distinct locations, small properties. On a big property like this, every time you mow, the second mow, it's gone, you got to reapply it. It's not like the geese eat it once and then go, well, that's, you know, too bad, we're out of here for the rest of the year. They're back again. Because flight control is getting used to other places, and again, the geese are getting chased other places, so.
Brian, do you think you can get, maybe get a price point on, on, on the units, and maybe see what kind of, like, I know it says seventy-five yards, see what kind of square footage we have back there, and maybe we could, you know, discuss...
Yeah, I think that's a better area to try something like that. I agree. I agree with Rick. The park's a little too big, I think, for it.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah, that, I know they've had issues up there. And at Big Key, and Rick will tell you, they got to stop feeding them. It brings them, so.
Well, that's half the problem, they're feeding them.
It is.
Yeah.
Yeah, I could definitely look into it. Absolutely.
I got a belligerent dog that would straighten that place right out.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
No.
Okay, so we're looking at a amount not to exceed, I guess in total, twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars. It adds together the geese harassment program as well as the filing report to the U.S. Fish and Wildlife for five thousand, two hundred and twenty-five. Okay, is there a motion to approve that amount for SNS Wildlife?
And Mr. Harvey, I would suggest that that be subject to the execution of an indemnity agreement with the township.
Okay. We'll add that into the motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. A motion made and seconded. Mrs. Pullen?
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Brasky?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Dentz?
Yes.
Mr. Rocco?
Yes.
And we did also have an applicant, or a submission from Geese Chasers of Southeast Pennsylvania, and they're looking at an amount of one thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars. That's the same cost as the past two years. And as you heard just a minute ago, they work very closely with Mr. Shadle and with our Park and Rec Board to, to provide their services. Any questions regarding Geese Chasers from Mr. Andrews?
No.
No.
Is there a motion to approve the amount not to exceed one thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars for Geese Chasers of Southeast, Southeast Pennsylvania?
And Mr. Harvey, that would once again be subject to the indemnity.
Subject to the indemnity, yes.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, item number fives, consider a proposal from FX Brown for Act 101 Recycling. Mr. Clark, this is all you.
Mr. Harvey, as the board is aware, every year, for as long as I've been here, the board has engaged FX Brown to aid the township in filing all of the necessary paperwork to get our Act 101 recycling grant filed and the money back for the amount that, that we recycle. Mr. Gray would probably tell you that this price has not changed in, in many, many years.
How many years?
Many, many, I believe.
Yeah, it's roughly, the cost is four thousand dollars to have this company go through the process of doing all the information. And I think the amount we get is somewhere in the area of eighty thousand dollars in recycling money. And that is something, by the way, usually, every year, I kind of make this little spiel here, but the more residents recycle, the more money we get. And so things like cardboard, which can be recycled now, you know, the inner rolls of toilet paper and paper towels can be recycled, you know, the boxes of cereal, that, you know, and, and all the other sort of cardboard boxes, everything comes in, you know, it's Ziploc bag boxes and, and, you know, trash bag boxes and those kinds of things. All that all can be recycled. It's not just newspapers and magazines anymore. It's, it's way past that now, and every kind of plastic you can imagine can be used as well. So the more we recycle, now, I know every time, especially around Christmas time, people are getting all their packages from Amazon, and I see all kinds of cardboard boxes in, in the trash, in my, on my street and other streets, and I just think that's, that's actually, you know, it's obviously chances to recycle, you know, and also a chance for the township to earn some money. So just a little public service announcement about recycling. So any questions for Mr. Clark regarding FX Brown's application? He's prepared for this.
I have a few.
I'm only kidding.
I believe this involves recycling and FX Brown. That's about it.
So the amount of four thousand dollars is the contract renewal for FX Brown. Is there a motion to approve that amount?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Pullen?
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Brasky?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Dentz?
Yes.
Mr. Rocco?
Yes.
Okay, we talked a little bit, and I forgot, actually, I kind of had to come back to Mr. Clark to give a summary of our executive session. I forgot about that. But we did talk a little bit about item number six, and we're going to entertain a motion at this time to table that.
So moved, I'll make a motion to table.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, item seven is consider quotes or fertilizer for the township facilities. Mr. Lawson is here, going to make his way up, gives a summary of the, the operation that we're looking to conduct here, and the prices that we got in, and your recommendation for who we should go with.
Okay. This is something that Falls Township had been doing for a few years before I got here. True Green is the company that comes in and sprays the township buildings, properties, that we own, some of the fall fields that the township owns and that, with tick repellent, flea repellent, fertilizer for the grass, seeding, and some of them, trying to think of the other thing that they do, they do one other spraying down at the soccer fields. And I think it's for like a crab grass or some type of grass that grows. So that's one of the things that they do down there. It is for all the township facilities, which I believe are twelve in all. So we have the Falls Township building, community park, phase one and two, Falsington Park, Pine Wood Pool, Three Arches Building, Mill Creek Fields, Von Hoffman Park, Austin Drive Fields, and now Quaker Penn. We do the baseball field and the soccer field down there. After the baseball field was put in down at Quaker Penn a few years ago, they had a problem with the sod or grass that they had put in, in the infield. So we had added True Green in to do a slice seeding and fertilizing down there to try to get that, to get rid of the grass that's there and grow grass that's better for the baseball field. They're running into possible injury problems down there because of the infield that they had. So it is working, I believe. Mr. Brasky's been down there, he sees the stuff working. We did have a men's softball field, or men's softball team down there. Last year, they will not be there this year because we thought that it was hindering the growth of the grass a little bit, because they do run across the grass and not the, the dirt. So we made steps that way to try to, you know, eliminate them from ruining it. So we're doing well.
All right, you're recommending True Green this year as well?
Yes, True Green has not moved their prices, same as two thousand seventeen. Also, Capital Turf that we called last year, and Total Lawn Care, their prices stayed the same, too. So True Green had come in the lowest bid, seventeen thousand, eight, eight hundred and seventeen dollars.
Okay. All right, comments or questions for Mr. Lawson?
No, sounds good.
Just, just a comment that True Green, I've seen them in action for years, you know, on the baseball fields, and they do a great job. Quality of the grass and, you know, even like at our baseball fields, you know, just the thickness alone that the grass grows, I mean, True Green does nice work.
Okay. Mr. Dentz?
No.
Mr. Rocco?
I don't have anything.
Okay, all right. There's no real public left here to speak, so I'll have to ask for public comment. Okay, any indemnification with this one, Mr. Galloway?
No.
Okay, all right. Is there a motion then to award the bid for fertilization to township properties to True Green in the amount of seventeen thousand, eight hundred and seventeen dollars?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Pullen?
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Brasky?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Dentz?
Yes.
Mr. Rocco?
Yes.
Okay, next item, Mr. Lawson's continuing here. This is some capital, or, yeah, capital purchases of equipment. Okay, it gives an idea of what we're purchasing here, and you have a detailed memo, memo here, but for people at home to understand what we're buying and what it's replacing.
Okay. We are looking to purchase four pieces of equip, actually, five pieces of equipment through the Public Works and the Parks Recreation. The first one is, is a two thousand eighteen International Seventy-four Hunter, I'm sorry, an HV five oh seven. International changed their body style this year. They no longer have a Seventy-four Hunter, they now have an HV. Same truck, just different name. We will be replacing a nineteen ninety-seven GMC truck that the township had had for almost thirty years here. The price of the truck would be eighty-seven thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars. With the outfit of the aluminum body would be seventy, and the plow and auger and spinner and all the other things that go on the truck is seventy-seven thousand, three hundred and fifty-nine dollars, for a grand total of one hundred and sixty-four thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars. The next piece of equipment that we would like to purchase is two two thousand and eighteen X mark sixty-inch. They will be replacing a two thousand and a two thousand and two sixty-inch X mark. The price for those would be sixteen thousand, nine thirty-eight, and they would be purchased at Garrett Equipment here in the township.
Okay, and those are lawnmowers, basically?
Yes, they're lawnmowers. The third piece of equipment that we need is to replace our two thousand skid steer, which is presently a CAT, and replace that with a two thousand eighteen Caterpillar, two thirty-six D. With the attachments that we have for our existing skid steer, we would not have to purchase this piece of equipment with a bucket. So we opted out of the bucket, because we already have one, and would like to purchase the auger attachment to drill the holes for the different things that we have, the light poles when they get knocked down. Instead of trying to dig them with the, the backhoe, then you have a bigger hole than what you need. So we went with the auger attachment for that, and also guide rail and different things in the township. Total price of that would be forty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. That would be thirty-four thousand for the skid steer, oh, I'm sorry, forty-three thousand for the skid steer, and thirty-seven hundred and fifty dollars for the auger attachments. With the auger attachments, we will be getting three different bits with that, a eighteen inch, a ten inch, and a six inch. So there'll be the three bits that go with the auger attachment. And then the fourth piece of equipment that we would like to purchase is a two thousand and eighteen Toro Sampro with the attachments that go on the back. That will be for nineteen thousand, five hundred and sixty-two dollars and eighty cents, and that will be doing all the baseball fields and other park areas that we have. It's a grooming machine, and also brooming and raking machine that we can use at all the facilities that we have in the township.
Okay. All right. Comments or questions, Mr. Lawson, regarding all the purchase of equipment?
No.
Just one question, Jay. The, on the new international?
Yes.
So you guys have a spec for aluminum body, is that a necessity because of the salt, I'm guessing?
We went with the aluminum bodies because of steel, the, the amount of years that we keep the truck here at Falls, and they do very well. I mean, they're twenty, thirty years. With a steel body, it would rust out because of the salt within, you know, probably the first ten years. So now you have a truck that has forty, fifty thousand miles on it with a body that's totally wiped out and the frame. With the program that they had in place before I got here, they were going with the aluminum bodies, one to save for the rot from the salt. Also, they now do the spraying of the frames with a salt neutralizer.
Okay.
It's very expensive, so doing the entire truck is, would be really, really expensive, doing all the trucks, the whole entire one. So we just tried to minimize that right to the frame and the bodies. And the trucks that we've been replacing, that's the problem that we've been having. The frames have been rotting, and also the cab mounts and cabs. So with this, going to the aluminum bodies and the specs, they're basically mirroring pendots, but it is done because of the salt and the decay that happens with the salt.
So, thanks.
Mr. Dentz?
My only question is number three, the skid steer.
I think it was a typo, and I think it was a typo on the price. It's forty...
Oh, yeah, that was my question.
It's forty-three thousand for the actual skid steer?
Yes, it was thirty-four.
Forty-three?
Yeah.
Oh, it says thirty-four.
It was thirty-four thousand, because we were trading that skid steer in. They were giving us nine thousand dollars. But after Mr. Gray looked in at everything, we couldn't trade it in because something with the state purchases, he would better know that. So we had to sell that on Minnesota bid, or go out the auction that we normally have.
Okay.
Okay.
Because it is, however the money that came from the state or whatever.
That was my only question, thank you.
They are, they are starting to switch into allowing you to trade vehicles in, but I think there's a process in that, that it's new, so. I think there's a process in that that it's new. So, you know, with government agencies and money from the federal government and state liquid fuels taxes, I think there's some regulations of why you can't. And Pete would know that better than I.
Okay.
How about you lawyers? Do you know?
We do not.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Jason.
Mr. Rocko?
I have none. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So we have multiple things here we're purchasing. I guess a short answer, easy question is, do we have to do them each individually or can we just do purchase all five items according to the memos?
You could do it pursuant to the memo that's been provided to you by Mr. Lawson and by Mr. Gray.
Okay. All right. So we have all these different, is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Just one motion for all these things? Okay. Is there a motion then to purchase these five items as outlined in the memos from Mr. Lawson dated February 6th and February 12th, 2018?
Some moves.
Second.
All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry. Wait, sorry. Sorry. It has to be roll call spending money. Sorry.
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Boraski?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Dent?
Yes.
Mr. Rocko?
Yes.
Okay. Now looking at consideration of tree removal services. Mr. Lawson?
Last year, we had a lot of trees that had to come down in the township. We had met with the Tree Commission, myself and Brian, and we went through the community park and they had a concern that the ash trees dying and the-
Ash, ash borer box?
Ash bores, yeah.
Yes. Created a problem at the community park. After meeting with them, going around the entire walking path, looking at the trees, them showing us something that I didn't know, it really enlightened me on, you know, how the trees are in bad shape. We figured that the amount of money that it would take to clean this up would have to go out the bid for a tree service. The other thing is, I feel it should be a good practice that the township goes out for a tree service each year or a multiple year thing is, is because every time that we go to take down a tree, one large tree is six thousand dollars. So if we go to take down two of them or three of them, then we're close to the threshold of going out the bid, which could hinder the process of getting a dangerous situation done. So we knew there was going to be a lot of money, so we went out the bid for a tree service. I don't know what the numbers were because Pete had taken that information and I did not have that with my packet.
Okay.
But Kent's tree service was the lowest bid and I don't know what the price was per hour.
Yeah, we know, we, yeah, we have, we had the information here, that's fine. I know that there was an issue with some of the bidding documents and I think Kent's did something incorrectly.
That's correct. There was an issue with the bid security that was submitted by Kent's. They were the low bidder, but after review, we believe that the defect in the bid security is fatal and that the low bidder should be disqualified. There are a couple of issues with the next lowest bidder, but they are curable.
And that next lowest-
Issues that are curable. Hasn't Kent's worked for us before? I guess nobody's here to know.
Yes.
They all have.
I mean, they, they have all worked for us. Basically, when I, when we do tree projects, I call three people, they come out and they give us a bid. Kent's has been the lowest bid for us, except for one time, Rick's was the lowest bid. But they have all worked for us, they have all done a good job. I can't say nothing about any of the ones, you know, that have put the bid in. Just that Kent's was the lowest one and that's why we use them all the time. But now that it's out the bid, if, if that disqualifies him, then it disqualifies him and then we go to the next person.
And McElvein was the next lowest.
And how did it disqualify him? Can you explain that?
So the bid security that was submitted, it was required to either be 10% of the total bid price by cash or 20% via bid bond. Kent submitted a check for a hundred and forty-two dollars and we don't know where that came from. It's not 10% of the contract price. It's not, it's just, it's just not sufficient security.
That's a fatal defect in the bids?
Correct.
What was the, what was the bid price? Yeah. It doesn't, all this has is an hourly rate.
Right. And we don't, so there's no total bid price. It's not like purchasing a piece of equipment, but we, we don't know where the hundred and forty-two dollars, hundred and forty-two dollars came from. We do know that the contract is going to be worth more than fourteen hundred and ninety-two dollars. The, the other bidders that submitted, submitted a bid bond just as 20% of the contract price. So it was guaranteed by a surety, even though there is no specific contract price listed.
So how, how do they calculate this new contract pricing?
So Jay, is it, so is this, so-
We pay 20% of the fact. We're support, we're securing 20% bid bond of whatever we spend.
Correct.
So is this an agreement that they're going to enter into township, so they're still going to have to come out and give you an estimate on the tree work based on these rates?
Yes.
So all they were doing was giving us a basic order of agreement?
Yes. Basically, what will happen is we'll go out and we're going to start at the park to try to get the walking path clear of any hazards that we may have as soon as possible. But it's going to be, I, I don't have the experience to say, okay, this is how much a tree is to take down. But I have the experience to say that we want to go from this point to this point and then they're going to have to tell me how many days that they feel it's going to take them to get there. Now, if a guy tells me, oh, it's going to take me two, three weeks, I'm going to be like, no way you can get that done in four days.
I'd actually like to see them provide you a do not exceed number. Like you say, we want X amount to the X amount and them say, you know, it's, it's eight, it's going to be eight thousand dollars. Like, don't come back in three weeks and be like, it was twenty-five thousand. You know what I mean?
We, we can, we can do that. We can make them give us the hours that they feel it's going to take and, you know, make them put that in before we approve it.
All right.
You know, like I said, this, this bid was a little different than, you know, ones that I've seen in the past. There were, there were some questions back and forth. They were, you know, more for Pete and the lawyers, not, not me.
Did you talk to, anybody talk to Kent's about the four hundred and forty-two dollars? Or how do you calculate that number?
We actually did get a lot of questions from, I believe, the second lowest bidder regarding the bid bond during the process. And he was essentially told, this is, the surety company will provide a 20% bid bond. It's, it's very unusual to receive cash security in a bid like this because it's not a set number. So it's very difficult to, to find that 10% number, whereas the bond just says it's 20% of the total bid.
So like, and Kent's with Kent's?
But there's no bid. This makes absolutely no sense to me.
How do you, how do you base that 20%?
I believe that the way the bid was written was that they had to give 10% of their estimated hourly rate. I thought. I don't know.
It's the- That doesn't, it's still not, it's still not 10% of their hourly rate even.
Right.
Well, 10%, I mean, if you add up, what did they come in?
He added up, he added up all his hourly rates, his hourly, his emergency rate, his crane hourly rate and multiplied that by 10% and gave us a check for a hundred and twenty-seven dollars.
My understanding is the specs were written that the, the bond, the bid security should be of the total bid, not the total of just the hourly rates for everything.
Yeah, I don't, I, I just thought that was the-
You didn't read the bid specs?
We did not.
But who did?
Pete did.
You?
Pete did.
Pete read, Pete read the bid specs?
Yeah.
What is the bid amount? There is no bid amount?
There is no bid amount. When you are doing a contract where you are asking for hourly rate and you're asking, and you're asking for, you know, it's on an as needed basis. So you want to know what it is. So when Jason needs work done, he can call them, he knows, he knows what the set rate is. When there isn't that and you can't give 10%, then, or cash, you're normally giving it the, the bid bond, which guarantees it up to 20%, which they, which they didn't do. And I believe, again, in talking about this with Pete, I believe it's anticipated that the work that will be done, based on what's been done in the past, would have been more than the fourteen hundred and ninety-two dollars, which would be the 10% of, of, that he provided.
I mean, we know this guy's a good contractor and it's eighty-two dollars an hour cheaper.
Right.
I mean, that's what I'm not comfortable with. I mean, if it's 10%-
You can, you can reject all of them and redo the whole thing again.
And then he can be made aware of the-
But I want you to understand, you can't waive a bid bond defect because the courts have said it's, it gives somebody a competitive advantage and therefore it is a fatal defect. So you, you can't waive it. There are other things, as Lauren said, that are curable or waivable. Bid bond defects are not curable or waivable, so you can reject them all, go out the bid. Lauren will tighten up the specs with Pete a little bit and then, and then go back out. Should be able to turn this around relatively quickly. Should probably have it for you in, what's the next month, March?
I think that's-
Certainly.
Well, let me ask you-
Personally, that's what I think. I'd like to do.
If we're going to, if we're going to reject all bids based on that, so McElvein, there's no issue with McElvein saying, I would have won because this dude screwed up and now he's going to get to redo it again?
None. You have an absolute right to reject all bids for any reason at all.
So then I, then I agree with Jeff and I think we should, we should do that then.
Then there would be a motion and it would be in order to reject all bids and then to authorize us to, authorize the manager to rebid the, the bid specs, rebid the job immediately.
I'm going to make that motion to reject all bids and fix these bid specs up as tight as we can get them.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
All right.
opposed?
Just, just one question. I mean, what do we fix? It sounds like Pete did send it out, they just, they just goofed up.
Yeah, I don't, I, I mean, it's essentially, there's, we don't necessarily know how many trees there are that have to be cut down. So you can't go and say, okay, we're going to, yeah, we're going to ask you to cut down 10 trees because we don't know.
Didn't we approve, didn't we approve eighty thousand dollars?
Yeah, but there could be others.
You did, you did. I mean, we're looking, we're looking at an estimate of well over 150 trees.
But we, we secured like eighty thousand dollars in the budget for tree removal.
Yes, you did.
And all they were doing is giving us an agreement that this is what we charge and you don't have to call every time you want to take a tree down and get three bids.
Yes.
Right.
Yes. The other thing is, I mean, there's some things that maybe, you know, we can add in that bid spec with a, with a crew. You know, we want a crew of four guys, chipper, bucket. We didn't really have that, you know. And, and not, not that anything was wrong with the bid. It was a little different than most, but, you know, this is the first time you guys ever went out for a tree bid. So it was a little, little different than other people had did in the past. That's all.
And also Mr. Boraski's suggestion that we get a not to exceed number before we send them out, that's not in the specs right now. So we really, we'd have a hard time sort of enforcing that on them. That's something that we can add into the specs as we, as we rebid it.
Do you know what we spent last year in tree service?
Last year in tree service, I want to say, this is only a rough number, I want to say we spent about forty thousand. Forty thousand. And that wasn't even at the park, that was along our green belts and that.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, the ash borer has, has been in the news quite a bit. It's an invasive species, comes from Asia and it's been destroying a lot of, a lot of ash trees in this part of the country, so.
And our, and our biggest fear, and Brian's here too, you know, I shouldn't just say myself, but Brian's included also. Our fear is that someone walking along the path and one of these dead and rotten tree branches fall. You know, they're walking with kids. Before I got here, I never knew how many people went to that park and it's, it's amazing. But we just don't want someone to get hurt, them walking their baby or whatever around the park.
Sure. Yeah, nobody does. Yeah. Okay. All right. Yeah, I think it's a little bit difficult. It's almost like you're looking for a professional service, but it's not necessarily a professional service because it is sort of an on-call that you're looking for. And so-
If it was, if it was, you know, some guys that we don't even know who they are, just random guys, but these are all decent contractors that have done work for us before.
Right. So me and all three of them are.
I know Kent's, when we did, when Sandy happened, they were out there chopping trees down in Thorn Ridge and all over.
Sure.
They all were.
Kent's was the one that was-
Yeah, that was a happy time for them.
We used a lot.
Yeah.
He's local and he, he lives, you know, he's in Thorn Ridge and his company's in Falls Township.
Yes. I mean, and, you know, it, it, it all has to go out the bid and whatever, but he did save us a lot of money from the other people that we had bid from. So.
All right.
I just have one other thing if I can.
Sure. Wait, you know, I'm sorry. So real quick, did we, I know we, we rejected-
Got a motion and a second. I don't think you voted because I think as you were getting ready-
We did ayes and then, I don't know, I asked for ayes and we didn't get any, but-
I think we did and I just had a question.
Yeah.
Were you aye or an nay?
I was aye.
Yeah. So did we, did that motion include rebidding?
Yes.
It did. Okay. I couldn't remember if we did or not.
A motion, does the motion have to include do not exceeds?
No. No, we'll, we'll fix that up based on what you discussed.
Yeah. So, okay.
With a recognition of service, I got here two years ago, I just passed in February. While all you guys are here, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity you gave me here. I appreciate it.
Okay. Sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Glad to have you aboard.
Two years already, huh? Isn't it?
Oh, my God.
Two years, uh, it's already eight now. Stress from Pete Gray.
All right. Number 10, consider purchase of a vehicle for code enforcement department. Mr. Bennett's been waiting patiently. Appreciate it.
Jay could have did this for you. You could be home right now.
Good evening, gentlemen. I'm just here to request the purchase of a 2018 Ford Explorer to put into my fleet and I'm going to rotate my vehicle to somebody else. And then we have a, I believe it's a 2008 Impala that will go to park and wreck. So we're just, it's a matter of just a cycle to keep things moving and to keep things in good condition and reliable.
Okay. The amount that we're looking at is thirty-three thousand nine hundred and sixty-one dollars from Hondrew Ford. All right. Questions?
No, none.
This will be your vehicle?
It'll be mine.
And who picked ebony black? That was your choice?
Green stripes. Yeah, no, it's white.
Oh, it's white?
It'll be white.
Oxford white. Right here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Look at the interior. Yeah, seats are ebony black.
I apologize.
It's going to be white the same as what I have now.
Colorblind when I read and even-
And then mine's going to go to one of my guys and then the Impala will go to the park and wreck department.
See a lot of dog hair in a white, black interior.
I prefer tan, but, you know, but that's just me. So, okay. Any, no questions? Is there a motion to authorize the purchase of the 2018 Ford Explorer from Hondrew Ford? Thirty-three thousand nine hundred and sixty-one dollars.
So moved.
Seconding.
Mrs. Pollan?
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Boraski?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Dent?
Yes.
Mr. Rocko?
Yes. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Consider proposal for vending services for the Pine Wood Pool and Falls Township Community Park. Mr. Andrews, you're back up.
Okay. This past summer was the first year we had switched from running the snack bar to a concession, using vending machines. The company we had in 2017 frankly wasn't overly happy with, you know, the machines were breaking down a little more than for my comfort. You know, we had some issues there. And after the season, we reevaluated and got in touch with another vending company, SBS Vending. I believe they're doing the vending here at the building. And we had a really good meeting. Their product is superior, their machines, what they can offer. They offer fresh sandwiches, stuff you can heat up in a microwave. We've never had that before. Their pricing is better than the company we had this past summer. And a good thing with them, they don't really work off a contract. They're, they really stand behind their word and I think that gives us a lot of flexibility. So for, we're looking to use them at the Pine Wood Pool for this summer and also at the community park, do some beverage machines. I think we could do well there, offer our exercisers and, you know, and people out there, you know, working out and stuff some, you know, cool beverages in the summer while we can make little commission off of that to help the parks, you know, expenses we, you know, we have down at the parks. So I feel very comfortable switching over to this company this year and ask you all to consider it.
Okay. All right. Comments or questions for Mr. Andrews? Mr. Galloway?
None.
Mr. Boraski?
Just one question. I know you had ran this by me before and we talked about the soccer field, like the pavilion area there, right?
Mm-hmm.
So I can't remember what, you talked to soccer, the soccer club, right?
Correct.
And what was the outcome?
Basically what we're doing, we're going to put a, a beverage machine right next to the concession stand. And when they're going to be selling in operation, we can just shut it off. And you can shut them off without shutting the compressor off. So there's not an issue there. We already talked to soccer about it.
Soccer club, they're still-
Already talked to them about that. Before I even moved forward, I talked to Sean with the soccer club, telling them what we were thinking and it's not a problem at all. So I think it'd be the best of both worlds there. I think we'll, we'll be able to, you know, offer something when they're not doing it, et cetera. It'd be no conflict at all there. That was my, one of my concerns before we even did it, down there.
Yeah, thank you.
Typically, the, the soccer club has a concession stand open on Saturdays, but when they have games on Sundays, they don't, they're not open for the concession stand. So this-
And we're just doing beverages down there. We're not doing snacks. I mean, the pool's a little more obviously selection. I think that's sufficient down there. I think we could do really well down there with doing that. And we can, you know, get some commission off of that and raise a few dollars.
Yeah.
Not to lie. So.
Sure. Okay.
And we're also putting one by the soccer stand and at the phase two pavilion by that playground. That playground, we rent that out. That pavilion is very popular because of the location and the playground there is always busy. So I think, I think we'll do well over there too.
Okay.
And we'll just reevaluate it then. What's great about the company is there's no contracts, there's- And we'll just reevaluate it then. What's great about the company is there's no contracts, there's no, we're not locked in. Uh, the company we lose, uh, used last year was a one, well, it was a season contract, but, um, which I liked, which I thought was, was, was appealing to this company.
Okay, all right.
Do we have cameras down there at the ti, at this time?
We don't, not in those areas, no.
That's a concern, vandalism at the park.
Yeah, I mean, we deal with that all the time, um, and frankly, talking to the guys in the vending business, that's something they kinda deal with. Even the guy I dealt with last year, we talked about some stuff at the park, and, um, it, it's part of the game, you know, what they have, so. They would come and replace it, repair it, whatever you need to do. But, you know, cameras are always a good thing, you know?
I'm surprised they don't have a camera on them, because they all.
Right.
They all have, um, internet access now, you can pay with Apple Pay and credit card, I'm surprised the cameras don't have that.
Yeah, they can, they, what's cool about it is that they can, they can track it, they can track when it's getting low, they know when to come out and replace, really cool. Um, but, yeah, you think that would be coming next, but.
Maybe they do, we just don't know it.
Well, maybe.
Probably watch those right now.
Could be.
Mr. Rocco?
I had one question, I think, uh, Mr. Boraski, uh, answered it for me. There's, uh, credit cards on, on these?
Yes, yes.
Okay, cool.
Yes, mhm.
It's a cashless world, I think we live in now, so.
Yeah, I, I, a lot, a lot of people had suggested that even before, you know, even when we had the snacks, you know, we didn't take, you know, cards, and, you know, we, we got the machines, and we, we have a couple other machines here, they work really well here in the township, so.
Right.
Yeah.
All right, uh, number of comments or questions? Is there a motion then to approve or to accept the proposal or award SVS vending? The vending services, uh, at the community park and Pinewood Pool, um, for, I guess, this, uh, coming season, or this year?
Yes, so moved, I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Appreciate it. All right, we have a couple of, uh, appointments to boards and commissions. And we do have, uh, we had a number of people put in for a Park and Rec, um, board, and we had two openings, we had, I think, four people put in, so we appreciate everybody putting in, uh, for those two positions. Typically, we do sort of, uh, you know, acknowledge the people that have had letters in the longest, uh, and who are still interested, uh, assuming everything else is equal, assuming everyone has good ideas, and, and people are committed to helping out whatever board they want to be on, and that's, that's the case with all these, uh, individuals. And I do what I make mention especially for people that, especially Park and Rec. Uh, for the couple of people who may not be appointed this evening, um, you know, you can obviously, you know, come to, any of the meetings are always, uh, open to the public. You're always, they're always looking for volunteers to help out, and input is always needed, so even if you're not on the board, you still can come and sit in the meetings and, 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 you know, have your voice heard. We would appreciate, uh, any and all, you know, input, uh, to help us make, uh, and I'm mentioning Park and Rec just because that's a board that's gotten a lot of, uh, a lot of people interested in, so. But that's true even for the other ones, so. Um, I know one of the boards, we do have to reappoint one of the members, Michael Ivanek, to the Board of Appeals. Is there a motion to appoint him to, uh, or I guess maybe to reappoint him to his spot?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, any other motions for other boards?
Um, yeah, I had the opportunity to speak to Brian Phillips. He, uh, put in, I, it was probably two, good two years ago for the Parks and Rec. Um, so I'd like to, and I think, uh, Mr. Harvey, you spoke to him as well, right? Yeah, so I believe there's two openings, like you said, um, one was five years, the other one was four.
Um, one term expires 2020, one term expires 2021.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion, um, to appoint Brian to the, um, seat that expires 2021.
Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, and I had the chance to speak to Ian Conklin, um, who's also interested in Park and Rec, um, and I would, uh, ask that he be appointed, or make a motion he be appointed to the turn that ends in 2020.
I'll second.
Motion made in second. Is it all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And we did have some other people put in, for example, Planning Commission, but, uh, those, that's, uh, right, as of right now, there are no openings on that. And so we'll, um.
They want.
Yeah, on planning?
Yeah.
Okay.
We can come back.
Yeah, no, because it's not listed on here. Okay, all right, we'll have to make sure.
I texted Brian Binney, I thought he said no.
No, please?
Yeah.
I thought we pointed somebody to fill.
Well, I wasn't here in January?
Maybe, yeah, 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 probably. Yeah, sorry, I forgot. Okay, so, um, and thank, as you always thank people for their interest in helping. Okay, uh, all right, so minutes are from January 16th. Comments, questions, suggestions, corrections?
Excellent minutes as always, Mrs. Pullen.
Is there a motion to accept the minutes as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I'll abstain.
Okay, Mr. Sullivan?
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. Just a couple of things to talk about this evening. The, uh, fishing pier at the community park is substantially complete. All of the work is done to the actual boardwalk portion. We do need to install another handicap rail, uh, from the parking area to the, uh, the fishing pier. That would be the only item that's left on that. The boat ramp, we are continuing to work with the gentleman that actually built the boat ramp for us the first time. This is the Quaker Penn Park Boat Ramp. We're looking at a whole new kind of way of, of attaching the ramp to the, uh, concrete portion of that dock so that we don't have the same problem with the pilings we've had in the last couple of years. Now, the right side is still okay, those, those pilings we can use, we can put that dock in anytime. Uh, we can't put the, the left-hand dock until we do something different, because all those piles are gone.
Okay. Uh, any comments or questions for Mr. Sullivan?
None.
No.
Can you explain, uh, the whole new kind of way of attaching the boat ramp?
Yeah, there's, in some we considered the first time, but the pilon seemed to be a better option until we had a couple of tough winters on, on the river, and had to put the ramp in the actual channel instead of into the cove where we wanted to put it. Uh, it would be a, basically a bar that comes from the concrete portion of the dock out to the far end, um, with a shock absorber, and with universal joints that allowed to move up and down with the tide. And the, the other dock section would be tied to each other, so it, they're basically all tied in together in one piece, and can move up and down in, in one.
So it would be one pylon out there or something?
The pylons that are ac, are actually still there are, on that side are the ones directly in line with the ramp and don't go out into the channel. Those, those are still there. Uh, we can use those until they.
So attach the bar too?
Yeah. We can, we can use those to keep that in place in this direction, and the bar to keep the thing in place in, in the channel.
You think that's a better option?
It seems to be. I mean, we'll see what happens when we actually have a design, but right now it seems to be a better option.
Do you have any kind of timeline? I mean, will it be ready for spring?
Well, at least the right side of the dock will be there in the springtime. We anticipate being able to resolve this issue also before we actually open up the dock.
The left side, you mean?
Yes.
So you think that might be done by spring?
I do. Uh, and we have to, um, once we hit March 15th, there is a moratorium for us to actually work in the water. But all this can be done from the shoreline, so that would be okay.
So we wouldn't have to work in the water?
We would not have to work in the water for this, and we're also allowed to do dredging, uh, if necessary. Even during the moratorium period.
Will the dock still be L-shaped like it was before?
Yes. Yeah, it would be the same configuration. It's just, it's, it's basically pinned on the far end to the concrete dock.
That's all I have.
Okay, any other questions?
No.
All right, um, is there a motion to accept the engineer's report as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, bill list is the amount of two million nine thousand one hundred and forty dollars eighty-seven cents. And of that roughly two million, uh, about, uh, one point, over one point three million is salary and benefits. And there's an additional, uh, twenty-one thousand in life insurance and disability insurance. And some of that does include, um, and actually there's additional, um, hundred and thirty thousand, hundred and twenty-five thousand, excuse me, in, uh, workers' compensation insurance. Um, so that's, you know, the two million dollars, about one point four, uh, is salary benefits, uh, and, and various insurance costs, plus another, about a hundred thousand in, um, state money, not actual taxpayer money. So, uh, you know, give, just give people an idea where the money is going and how it breaks down. Comments or question, well, there's nobody here to ask about, for, you know, so. So is there a motion to pay the bills, two million nine thousand one hundred and forty dollars eighty-seven cents?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Pullen?
Mr. Gallaway?
Yes.
Mr. Boraski?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Dins?
Yes.
Mr. Rocco?
Yes.
Uh, executive session, Mr. Clark, can you have a summary of the executive session we had before the meeting?
Yes, Mr. Harvey, prior to the meeting, the board held an executive session to discuss a matter related to a collective bargaining agreement, to discuss a litigation matter, and to discuss, uh, several personnel matters.
Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, police report, chief?
Good evening again, men. But we have, we have a very short list for you this evening. We have Coffee with a Cop, will be Thursday at the Senior Citizens. It'll be from nine to ten-thirty. I welcome any member from the board. If you're not working that day, you're welcome to join us for that. We just finished our dare graduations. Our last one was at St. Mike's. It went very well, and I want to thank the members of the board for your support with the dare program. Also, we're, we're well into the Achieve for a Day program. We just finished at Eleanor Roosevelt. Presently, we're at Penn Valley Manor and Oxford Valley. Officer Jim Maratti is continuing to make progress. He's doing better. It's like a marathon. He's do, he's doing much better. He's, he can say one word at a time, and he says certain words. And finally, our detective bureau has made some very, very good, uh, did some very good drug investigations in conjunction with other police departments, and we've, uh, we've made a lot of good progress. I want you to know that. I can't go into details, but I want you to know that they did a bang-up job. Thank you. Any questions?
Um, comments or questions for, from board members?
No, no questions.
No?
Thank you.
Uh, Chief, actually, I'm sorry, I had one, sorry. Uh, last year, we passed an ordinance regarding hotels and motels and, and the registrations as a, as an effort to try and get, uh, do our, do something anyway, or do more than we're already doing, uh, regarding the, um, obviously it's not just opioids, but drugs in general. Well, has that been effective?
Yes, it, it's helped us tremendously. Um, it's given us leads, it's pointed us in different directions, and the detective bureau has taken advantages of that.
Okay.
Wouldn't thank you for your help with that.
No, no, sure, I just, yeah, thank you very much. Okay, um, so manager comment, with no manager, we're gonna sort of bounce some things around here in terms of, um.
I like how Mike snuck out.
Yeah, yeah. Well, we know who does the work anyway. Um, so Ms. Gallagher's still here, so we'll be okay. Uh, and we have a couple of different items here on the agenda. One is regarding fireworks. Okay, Ms. Gallagher, we're talking about fireworks a little bit here, this is for the community day?
Certainly, this is the same contractor that we have used for the past several years. I believe the price is the same, um, but I can't speak to that definitively. Um, we are working to finalize the terms of the agreement, but it's a fairly standard agreement that we've worked with them over the last several years.
Okay, it's nine thousand dollars, this is, uh, you know, it is what we've paid in the past.
It does sound correct, yeah.
Okay, so, um, we'll be looking to, uh, authorize the approval of this contract pending legal review?
Correct.
Okay, the amount of nine thousand dollars for D and M Fireworks LLC. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Seconding.
Mrs. Pullen?
Mr. Gallaway?
Yes.
Mr. Boraski?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Dins?
Yes.
Mr. Rocco?
Yes.
Let's see, in terms of, uh, escrows, one thing I asked Mr. Gray to start doing was to put escrows all, escrow releases all on one sheet, and so they could be approved all at once instead of doing them one by one.
Right, I did.
Uh, and so board members can take a look at the escrow releases here. One is for family dining, Burger King, um, on New Falls Road. One is for US Venture, which is Sylvie Concrete, this compressed natural gas facility on New Bold Road. One is for waste gas on New Bold Road, one is for Wells Fargo on Trenton Road. Is there a motion to approve all four escrow releases?
Yes, so moved.
Second.
Mrs. Pullen?
Mr. Gallaway?
Yes.
Mr. Boraski?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Dins?
Yes.
Mr. Rocco?
Yes.
Okay, we have donation requests, uh, that we get periodically, uh, here at the township and different organizations we support. Uh, two parades, the Memorial Day Parade, which goes to the American Legion Post Day 34, uh, the Bucks County St. Patrick's Day Parade Committee, uh, and that parade is coming up. I'm sure we'll hear something about that in a little bit. And our four sports leagues, the Feral Sales Athletic Association, the Fall Soccer Club, Levittown American, and Levittown Continents. All six of these donations would be the amount of six thousand dollars. And there are letters attached, uh, and budgets with, that we request those organizations give us, so we have an idea of where the money's going. Uh, is there a motion at this time to approve the donations to these, uh, six organizations?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, sorry, spending money. Um, Mrs. Pullen?
Mr. Gallaway?
I'll abstain.
Mr. Boraski?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Dins?
Yes.
Mr. Rocco?
Yes.
Uh, the last thing I have here on the, on the, under Mr. Gray's things would be the bare root trees. This is a program that's been run now for several years, uh, working with the Shade Tree Commission to purchase bare root trees. Um, we've purchased over five hundred and ten of these over the past several years and planted them all over the township. Many of the township park and other obviously township, uh, properties. So we're looking to purchase fifteen trees at a total cost of fifty dollars each, total cost of seven hundred and fifty dollars. Okay, is there a motion to approve, uh, the purchase of these fifteen trees?
I'll make the motion.
Seconding.
Mrs. Pullen?
Mr. Gallaway?
Yes.
Mr. Boraski?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Dins?
Yes.
Mr. Rocco?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Gray usually announces new businesses. We have two here, Remax Total at 120 Trenton Avenue, uh, and Flowers Nails and Spa at 364 Trenton Avenue. And Mar, and, yeah, and it says Marshall, it's a Falls Township at business, so.
Is it West Trenton Avenue?
Probably, yeah. Well, we have another, uh, things to talk about, no?
Nope, that's as far as I know.
That was it?
That was it, huh? I, okay. Uh, all right, board comments, um, Mr. Rocco?
Just to clarify, the Remax is on Trenton Road, and the Flowers Nails and Spa is on Tre, West Trenton Avenue.
Okay. Oh, yeah, yeah.
That makes sense, right?
Yeah, 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 okay, all right. Yeah, I was just, I was just reading, wasn't working, so.
Uh, no comment, thank you.
Mr. Dins?
I have none.
Mr. Boraski?
No comment.
Mr. Gallaway?
Uh, just a reminder that the, uh, 30th Annual Bucks County St. Patrick's Day Parade is coming up. It's gonna be on March the 10th, and we're gonna follow the new route that we adopted last year. With the closing of St. Joe's, we had to find a new place to gather. So we're gonna gather again at Conwell Egan. Um, hopefully the weather is going to cooperate, and not be like it was last year. That was a once-in-a-lifetime deal. I'm sure it's gonna be a beautiful day. The parade's gonna travel down in reverse, basically, and we're gonna end up, uh, at the ballfield right next to, uh, Costello Fuel across from Kaz Don's. The grandstand will be there. Encourage everyone to come out and enjoy the day, and, uh, patronize the businesses there on New Falls Road in Falls Township, as well as, uh, the after parade party with the Eagles closing, uh, the Eagles Club. Uh, they're having a holly at the, uh, High Burnings Division One in Bristol Borough. So that is, uh, open to all, and everyone welcome. So, uh, we're looking forward to a great parade, and, uh, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Next year was the coldest day of my life, I think.
Uh, it was, it was cold.
At least it didn't snow, the one year it snowed, honestly.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so, um, yes, it was bad. Um, so a couple issues I had to, uh, things I wanted to bring up. First off, um, I'm gonna ask the board, uh, for a motion. We do have a member of the, uh, Environmental Advisory Council who has been, uh, in fact, I don't think he's ever attended any of the meetings since he's been appointed. And so I'll ask, and I don't, I'm not throwing a name at anybody personally, um, just because it's, you know, it's not about, you know, bringing somebody's name up, just to, but, bringing somebody's name up, just to, but, ask for a motion to send notice to the individual that they will be replaced, you know, if they don't make contact with the board or with the township at some point, or attend the next meeting. Is there a motion to that effect?
Make that motion.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And we also got a request for a donation. It did just come to us, it went, I think, to all townships in Bucks County from the Bucks County Society for the Prevention of